Meeting has been given by the Board Secretary in the following manner. Posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building, mailing written notice to the South Jersey Times and Courier Post, and filing written notice with the Clerk of the Township of Washington on January 5th, 2022. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Can you all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we're going to be having a presentation first from Whitman Elementary School.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent McGee, Administration, and the Washington Township community here in this room. And also watching live at home on YouTube. As you know, is this broken? I speak very loud, so there we go. We'll try it again. So you heard all that there, right? Well, it's a good start. Throughout life, as you know, we learn many different types of skills. We learned in the very beginning to sit up, to eat, to walk, and then we proceed into some academic skills. As life progresses, we continue to learn academic skills, and then finally, career skills start to make their way into our repertoire. Underlying all of these skills is a foundation of executive function skills, without which we can't do much of anything else. In her book, Building Executive Function, which I brought with me this evening, Dr. Nancy Sula of the Innovative Designs Company identifies 40 life skills that we all use on a daily basis and that we maybe even take for granted and not realize that we're using. These include the ability to focus, the ability to follow multi-step directions, how to catch and correct errors, to reason and to plan. Combining these skills lead to life skills to collaborate together, to lead, the ability to have self-conscious control, self-awareness, self-control, social awareness, and also responsible decision-making. Executive function makes all of these skills possible. However, executive function is not something that can be taught in isolation. Our rich curricula here in Washington Township certainly require our students to utilize these formative skills, but it is incumbent upon us as educators and family support systems to ensure that we build student skills from pre-K all the way up to senior year to make them successful adults who can be productive in the workforce and who can be good human beings in society. So I'm going to draw your attention to our PowerPoint presentation. It should be available to you in the Board Docs as well. And I'm going to go forward, yep, and share with you a quote to get things started. "The key to students achieving the level of higher-order thinking required by the CCLS and emerging tests is the ability of teachers to realize that the progression to higher-order skills requires attention to executive function." And that again is by Dr. Nancy Sula. So take a look at this chart and take a look at our brains. If you look very closely, I know that it's hard to see here in the room, but if you take a look at the chart itself, you can see, starting from age zero, the chart goes all the way to age 85. And as you can see, the trajectory of learning and building our brains over time continues the whole way. So think of our district, starting in pre-K. So you're looking down at age three, see how it starts to head up? And even as we get older into most of our age groups, you can still see that our brains are continuing to develop over time, and that's done through these executive function So you probably ask yourselves, what does executive function mean? Well, executive function and self-regulation skills are the mental processes that enable us to plan, to focus attention, to remember, and to juggle multiple tasks. And yes, even our kindergartners, our young, some of it, pre-K, our kindergartners, our youngest learners, they are doing multiple tasks and they are juggling multiple things because we are starting to prepare them very early to do what we all do all the time, right? We're always juggling many things, no matter what job we do. It's all about juggling and bringing things together. So these skills are used in everyday life to help us to learn, to help us to learn, to work, and to manage our daily life. Basically, what they call executive function is the management system of the brain, which makes sense. So why are we focusing on this? We're doing a lot of work with this at the K-5 level currently because we're noticing that a lot of these skills are lacking or missing in some of our students. In order to teach effectively and to ensure that our students are receiving the best education possible, it is incumbent upon us to make sure to develop these skills so that the seeds of learning can sprout. With the pervasiveness of technology around us, as it is being placed in the hands of children at a much earlier age, educators are finding that children need support in areas such as cooperation, collaboration, decision-making, and effective interactions. We sometimes have children who are so used to working on the iPad or doing things that when they go to play, they start to struggle. And this goes all the way up, you know, anybody that has lived through that time that we were away from school, experienced being home, experienced being on the computer, on a TV all the time. I don't know about you, but it's driving me crazy to have to look at these screens so much all the time. It's part of our life and it's so important, but simultaneously, so is just having a conversation, right? Talking to each other, working out our problems civilly and having conversations. That's all part of executive function. So now I have a little test for you. This is not really a test, but it'll give you an idea of something that's like the executive function skills. So this is called Stroop's Test for Executive Function. And basically, what it does is it measures your selective attention and your cognitive flexibility. So when you take a look at these colors, so here, the goal of this exercise is to silently to yourself, say the color of the word, not what the word says. So go ahead and try to do that. If you look for, I did this a couple of times, and I started off, I'm like, oh yeah, I got this. But then I was like, oh wait, no, I'm actually reading the wrong, it's, focus back on the task. And this is just another thing, when you're managing different things that are happening, even something that looks as simple as this, again, we want to prepare our students to be able to do these things by helping to build their attention skills and be able to focus on a task when we have a lot of things going on. So take a moment and check that out, and you'll see. So executive function takes place in the prefrontal cortex of the brain, and this is the part of the brain that helps students be successful in academically rigorous activities, which we ultimately want our students to complete and experience successfully. Those are other example components. As you can see, we have planning, organizing, error correction, reasoning, predicting and visualizing, and decision-making, all things that are very important life skills. So what the gist of everything that we're talking about tonight is, is that students and adults, all of us included, we continue to learn, our brains continue to develop our entire lives. But these are the skills that are underlying, that go behind all of these different life tasks that we have to do. So we want to start with our students to really build this up, and we're going to have some tips for families that you can do at home as well as we go through our presentation. So on the next slide, you can see an introduction to the executive function skills. I'm going to take you through this rather quickly because I want to get to our student presentation, which is the most important and fun part of tonight. So you can see the different areas that we're working on. The first would be, we'll go to the next slide, break it down a little bit. All right, so this is cognitive flexibility, and it's just what you think it is. It's shifting focus from one event to another, changing your perspective. Wow. Having a conversation, listening to someone, validating what they might, he or she might be saying, and maybe it would change your mind, maybe it wouldn't. But having the ability to listen and be able to do those things, that's part of executive functioning. Seeing other points of view, catching and correcting your errors, thinking about multiple concepts simultaneously. We all think about many things all the time, and this is just another example of that. So we give some examples in these slides of how we can help. So what we can do at school to support this. Group consensus building, good old-fashioned board games, pattern games, riddles, wordplay, jokes, musical chairs, dance jam, Rubik's cubes, sit and stand, Simon Says. These are all examples of things that we can be doing with our students to help them along. Working memory, just what you think it is, you know, storing and manipulating visual and verbal information, finding things that are the same or different. Graphic organizers, planners. Do you guys use planners? Sometimes electronic. I know I would be lost without my electronic calendar. I'm on there all the time, and it keeps me on task and keeps me focused with what I need to do. That's an example of something that we can do for working memory. Planning is another one. Problem solving. Reasoning. Inhibitory control. And self-awareness. So our next slide, you can see the 40 executive function skills that was put together by Dr. Nancy Sula from our IDE Corporation, who is a consultant that works with us in our schools to help us to develop these skills, the skills with the students, and actually come in and work with our teachers to ensure that we're doing activities and putting plans together to address these things while we're still doing the curriculum. At the same time, this becomes part of the curriculum underneath because what's our ultimate goal? We want successful students, and we also want successful people who can have meaningful conversations and bring things to consensus and make decisions. So that's all what goes into behind this. So to kind of finish up my portion of this, what can parents do at home to support executive function skills in your children? And again, this starts young, and it goes all the way, our entire trajectory of students in Washington Township, these are things that you can do and gradually cut back on as they get older. Breaking the tasks into smaller steps to assist the students with learning how to follow directions. Following instructions, huge, right? Multiple-step directions, stopping, assessing, and moving forward with a plan. Making checklists to teach children how to prioritize, to determine order and importance. Think about everyday life. We often, I'll speak as a principal, many things coming to you at one time and trying to decide and parse out, what am I going to handle first? What can wait till a little bit later? These are skills that children and all of us would need as well in order to be successful in the workforce and in life. Engaging children in physical activities. Get them out there. Get them doing some yoga, playing a team sport, dancing, whatever is of interest to your child, to get them moving physically, to get the brain connection going. And believe it or not, as well, establishing routines. Routines are very important for all of us. We like to, you know, not always be directly on a routine, I'll speak for myself, but in general, with working with students, building that routine gives them a sense of security and gives them a sense of comfort to make decisions, to take a chance with making a decision, and again, to try to look at another person's vantage point, at least validate it and respect it, and then move on and make your decision ultimately, as it would be your right to do. So the next slide would be some professional resources for teachers. So we did have a cadre of teachers that were trained this past summer in executive function. Approximately five or six teachers from each of the elementary schools went to this program and have gotten started and have begun to implement it in the classroom. There is a self-paced course that is available to teachers and to administrators. We all have gotten started on that, thanks to Gretchen Gerber getting the ball rolling with this, to learn more information and to see what we can do, some of the simplest things that we can do in order to instill these skills in our children. Teachers can explore strategies to build the levels, the six levels of executive function skills, and don't forget the SEL competencies, social emotional learning comes into play as well. And we do have consultants from the IDE Corporation that come in and they provide support, coaching to our teachers, and work directly with our students as well. So we have a really good, good thing started and a good thing going. And the last slide I have is actually, I'm going to be turning things over. We have, actually, two teachers are involved in this project, not this project, but in the project we're presenting tonight. I have fifth grade teacher Mrs. Tia Cade, who was unable to join us tonight, but joining us is her co-teacher, Mrs. Diane R. Stevens. And most importantly, we have a student presentation by fifth grader Deborah Horn. She is going to be absolutely fantastic. I feel it in my bones. And I'm going to invite Mrs. Diane R. Stevens to the podium. And I also want to thank our curriculum supervisor, Mrs. Christine Geringer, who has been supporting us through all of our work with executive function. Mrs. Stevens, if you would join me, please.
Good evening to everyone, and thank you for having us the opportunity to be here today. My name is Diane R. Stevens. I co-teach in the fifth grade with Tia Cade at Whitman Elementary School. She wanted to be here with us this evening, but due to a prior engagement, she was unable to attend, so therefore, I'm here. This summer, Mrs. Cade attended executive function training where she learned strategies to not only increase student engagement, but to help students develop skills that can be used throughout their lives. Tia has shared this information from executive function training with me. Together, we integrate our district's English Language Arts curriculum while cultivating the executive functioning skills necessary to help students to get the most out of our lessons. Mrs. Cade and I recognized that certain foundational skills undergrid success in the classroom, so we decided to focus on those areas first. Areas like inhibitory control and planning allow students to focus on a task, attend to a person or activity, work toward a goal, and manage their time. The 10 Habits for Student Success poster that is hanging in our classroom, which is represented right here on the podium, those habits are closely intertwined with the ideas from executive functioning training and act as a visual aid for our students. Recently, in our Wit and Wisdom program for Module Four, we studied the essential question, how can sports influence individuals and societies? As you know, we are in a baseball frenzy right now with the success of the Philadelphia Phillies, which has been great for this module. For this culminating activity, students gathered information about the history of the Negro League Baseball in the United States and wrote an essay explaining why Negro League baseball players should be honored each April 15th, when Major League Baseball celebrates Jackie Robinson. To complete this task, our students had to use their executive functioning skills. They had to use their time wisely, contribute to academic conversations, use available resources, and demonstrate their best effort. This evening, we have fifth grader Debbie Horn with us, and she will share her essay that she did for our assignment for our focusing questioning task, and each student also did an audio recording of their particular assignment. And this is the book, that Module Four, and as you can see in our slide, these are great illustrations from our book. And here is Debbie.
Okay. So in the 1800s, white Major League baseball team owners got together and decided that they didn't want Negroes to play on their teams. Since African-Americans were allowed to play on Major League teams, they made their own league, the Negro Leagues. The Negro Leagues had many successful players, and Jackie Robinson was the first Negro League player to join the Major Leagues. We should honor and remember all the Negro League players and their accomplishments on April 15th, Jackie Robinson Day, along with Jackie Robinson himself. One reason we should honor, Amber, I'm sorry. One reason we should honor Negro League players is because they showed strength and resilience. Since they were not able to join the Major Leagues, they made a league of their own. In the book, We Are the Ship, on page nine, Kadir Nelson explains how Reub Foster created a professional Negro League, like the majors, but for colored baseball players. This showed resilience because instead of making a league, they could have just quit. It took a lot of strength to make a league on their own. Next, we should honor Negro League players on Jackie Robinson Day because they were very talented. In the text on page number 51, it states Josh Gibson was hitting the balls out of ballparks everywhere. If you're able to hit a ball out of a ballpark, that shows some great talent. And in the same book on page 60, it says, "Sometimes Satchel Paige was throwing so hard, he wouldn't even let the batters touch the ball with their bat." It is hard to throw or hit a ball with a bat, therefore. There were many other players who were as skilled as Josh Gibson, Satchel Paige, and Jackie Robinson, and we should remember them. Another reason why we should celebrate Negro League players on Jackie Robinson Day is because they paved the way for Jackie Robinson to break the Major League Baseball color barrier. On page 78, Kadir Nelson wrote, "If there had been no such thing as the Negro Leagues, there would be no Jackie Robinson, or Willie Mays, or Hank Aaron." The Negro Leagues trained Jackie Robinson, and if he was already good at baseball, they made him even better. In conclusion, we should celebrate Negro League players along with Jackie Robinson because they eased the way for Jackie Robinson to join the majors and show how good African-American baseball players can be. You might be asking, why does this matter? Well, you sure are inquisitive. Sports helped show people to look beyond someone's looks and instead, focus on the actual person, him or herself.
Debbie, you did a fantastic job. And that is our presentation. Thank you for having us tonight. We enjoyed it. Thank you.
That was great. What a beautiful job. Thank you so much. So in recognition of your presentation to the Washington Township Board of Education on the district's partnership with Innovative Designs for Education Corporation, cooperate, Designs for Education Corporation, and the important work Whitman's Elementary is devoting to enhancing executive function skills in the classroom, we further applaud your work in equipping parents with ways to promote skill building, including focus, emotional control, self-restate, and stress tolerance at home as a further support for student growth and success. This goes to Mr. Anderson. Would you accept the one from Mrs. Cade?
Yep.
Tell her Mrs. Clancy sends her regards.
Okay.
We went to school together. And Mrs. Stevens?
And would you accept this one, Deborah Horn?
Deborah, here.
Oh, Cindy, I'm sorry. I didn't catch your first name. This one belongs with, you can take that from Mrs. Cade too, okay? Because you are amazing. Thank you.
Our next presentation is the state assessment data for the spring of 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Clancy. So Mrs. Gerber and I, Director of Elementary Ed, and myself as Director of Secondary Ed, will try to bring some sense and life to our 2022 Spring NJSLA results and also our College Board results, which I'd like to start with. So when it comes to the AP test, we really do shine in the district. This has been a little bit difficult getting through COVID because as you can see, the percentage of AP students who score a three, four, or five on the test, which qualifies for college credit in many postgraduate or post-secondary institutions, is 68%, and it's held at 68% for two years. Prior to that, it was higher, but what we saw during the pandemic is many students opted to drop their AP course in favor of something else because they were fearful of how they would navigate that through remote instruction. So we're still at 68%. That's more than two out of three students can earn college credit through this course, one or more that they're taking. And here we just have more detail on it. In 2021, we had 68.1%, and then it went up to 68.4 in 2022. The number of exams was 212 for total AP students, I should say, and 407 total exams, and that is on the uptick after an all-time high of 752 in 2019. These are our SAT results from the senior class, and you can see that the English reading and writing and mathematics, these two data sets are fairly steady, fairly even, and here's the total, the aggregate. It's dropped a few points, I'll tell you, across the nation. They're saying in some of these standardized tests, including the NAEP, which Bunker Hill will take this year, is at a 30-year low across the nation, but we have not lost precipitously a lot of ground on that count. The ACT is even better. So the ACT, we are at a composite score of 24.4. That actually is the second highest that we've had in, in, second highest in a five-year range that we're looking at. So there was very little regression in the ACT. And finally, we're now going to transition to our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data. Mrs. Carey.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So I'm just going to set the stage for our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment results to kind of paint the big picture before we start to review all of our data. So the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, this assesses students in grades three through nine in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and then in grades five, eight, and 11 in Science. So again, we're going to go through the state performance, the district performance, and then we'll drill down into the school performance. We are conducting, actively conducting, further analysis, which we will discuss a little bit later, on our data in terms of performance on certain standards and individual student performance as well. We'll also discuss some interventions and strategies that we're using from this baseline data. And very quickly, before we advance to the next slide, I do want to recognize our staff for the administration of the state assessment. Gone are the days that you can sharpen your pencil, sit down, and get a piece of paper and take the test. There is a lot of work that has to go into the administration of the assessment and to make sure that the assessment is administered with fidelity from class to class and from school to school. And it really is a team effort. For example, our custodians have to set up alternate locations to make sure they're ready for testing. Our buildings and grounds and operations have to schedule around our testing schedule. Our courier has to bring materials to each of the schools to make sure our students have them for testing. Transportation and food services have to work around our testing schedule to make sure they're providing those services for our students, whether we're changing the schedule or it's a delayed schedule. Our instructional support staff, our nurses have to be trained to know how to walk into a secure testing environment. Obviously, our certified staff, teachers, CST, needs to learn how to administer the test and make sure we're keeping it secure. Our CST, our counselors, our supervisors, administrators, they all make sure our students have what they need and how they can access the test through accessibility features, accommodations, what have you. All of those people are making sure our students have what they need. Technology has to make sure all of our devices are ready to access the tech platform. And the data tech department, which I have to mention is my department, they are the wizards pulling all of the data together that we have to submit to the state so that our kids can take the test. And I have two really special thank yous that I do want to recognize, and one is our data tech secretary, Heather, who becomes like the hub of testing and goes like above and beyond to learn the testing procedures, and our school test coordinators. So they are our elementary interventionists and our counselors at the secondary level. They are like the event planners for the entire school to make sure that we're administering the test appropriately so that we can get this really, really, really important data because this is what we use to drive instruction and curriculum. So I really needed to mention that because it truly is a district-wide effort. So if you wouldn't mind giving a round of applause for those in the room and watching at home. We thank you, recognize, and appreciate you. So as I mentioned, we will be reviewing the state, district, and school data. This presentation's going to be a little bit different than it was in previous years, and that's because of the assessments we did or did not take. So originally, we had the park assessment, but that was sunset in 2018. Then we had the SLA beginning in the spring of 2019, and then we had a global pandemic, which shut down testing in 2020 and 21. So what that means is we do not have any longitudinal data to compare the same assessment. So we don't have any assessments that we can say, oh, we've made growth, or we need to work on this, because it would kind of be comparing apples to oranges. So this is kind of exciting because this truly is baseline data for us. So, this is kind of exciting because this truly is baseline data for us. And also, students in grade eleven are no longer required to take the SLA. They take what's called the GPA, or the Graduation Proficiency Assessment. Those scores are released, and we will have that in a second follow-up presentation. So, again, I just want to set the stage and remind everyone of the instructional landscape that we had when we administered the test. So, we were still in the throes of the pandemic when we took the test last year in end of April and throughout May. We still had students who were in quarantine. We still had remote and in-person instruction going simultaneously. We had shortages in all positions that we were all trying to battle with, and we had a transient population due to the pandemic. And we had a lot of students coming into the district or coming back to the district from private school, homeschool, cyber school, or out of state. So, I thought it would be really important, my colleagues and I wanted to show this to you, that this is an approximate number of new students in each tested grade last spring. This doesn't include new students that came to us in 2021, but from July 1st, 2021 through May, which is when we tested, in 2022. And this is really interesting because especially like in grades four and grades nine, there's over fifty new students in a grade level, which is a lot of new students. Why is this important? Because obviously, coming from different states, coming from different districts, there's different standards, there's different curriculum, there's different pacing. So, we really have to get to learn and know where our students are coming from so we can meet them at that instructional level. And here's just a nice way to visualize the different places our students came from. So, I know you can't read all of them, but you can see the big ones, which were Philadelphia, private school, homeschool, Camden, Brooklyn, New York. Some of the ones that you can't see are, or you might have difficulty seeing. We have a lot of students come in from California, from Florida, Georgia, Ohio, Kuwait, Germany, and Austria. So, again, we're really painting the picture of our population is changing, and we have to meet them where they are. And this, again, is very exciting because we are considering this our baseline data to collect other measures as well to make sure that we're providing the appropriate instruction and the appropriate interventions, which my colleagues will review.
Kathy, if I could just interrupt really quick.
Yeah, sure.
If you're not familiar with a Wordle, the largest-- sorry. If you're not familiar with a Wordle, the largest font that's there represents the most kids. So, when you're looking at what's really small, that was a smaller number of students, and you were looking at the size, so that gives you a kind of comparison of how many of those students came from those different areas. Oh, great. On the next slide, anyway. So, that's why I was like, she's walking away. Okay. So, in elementary, this slide just basically tells you the number of students that were tested in ELA in math, and if fifth grade, science at the bottom. So, clearly, those numbers are representative of the students in those tested grades and including our science test in fifth grade. So, as a district, in ELA math in grade three, in comparison to the state, so the light blue is the state and the dark blue is the district. So, you'll see we are above, slightly above the state in ELA in grade three, and we were above the state in math, also in grade three. In grade four, we were neck and neck with the state. So, we are pretty much at the same number. And in math, we did have a dip, but I will say, too, we were implementing a new math curriculum, and, you know, we were not able to train everybody. So, I was really happy that we, in grade three, and you'll see on the next slide, on grade five, did fairly well because we weren't-- development that was needed throughout last year because of the sub shortages and the challenges that we had just with staffing. So, in grade five, in ELA, again, the light blue is in the state, the dark blue is the district, so we were above in ELA in fifth grade as a district. We were also above in math as a district. So, we felt good that we were above the state average. That's typical for where we are, slightly above the school, the state average within all of our schools. But we are, you know, going to take a closer look at our grade four and just take some time this year for professional development, and I'll talk to you some more at the end about some strategic plans that we have at the end. In science, again, state is represented by light blue, and we performed slightly higher at a one-seventy-four. So, this is now a breakdown of just each school. So, when you look at each school, this really is baseline data. This is typically the slide where we would have previous years. So, this is really where we're starting at in terms of grade three, grade four, and grade five. The light blue representing ELA, the dark blue representing math, and the green representing science. If we move through each school, you're going to see Birch's, Hurfield, Thomas Jefferson, Wedgwood, and Whitman. But again, keeping in mind that we were above the state as a district average throughout in grades three, four, and five, with the exception of math, which we're going to work on. And turn it over to Dr. Gregor.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. You're going to hear similar themes at the secondary level where the big picture is generally very positive, but then there are some areas of concern when you drill down to a school level. These are our participation rates at the three middle schools and the high school, and I can tell you from direct experience last year at Orchard Valley, the previous assessments, state assessment, Park, we had in the hundreds of refusals. We had single-digit last spring at Orchard Valley Middle School, and many of those were for reasons other than controversies over testing, I'm happy to say. So, starting with grade six, we had the comparison here of ELA and mathematics. The state is in the light color. You can see in ELA and math, we exceeded the state in grade six. Grade seven, we were slightly below in ELA, and slightly below, like two points in math from the state average, grade seven. Always a challenging grade level, any middle school principal will tell you. Grade eight, mathematics, the ELA was a couple, a few points below the state average at English Language Arts, and math was three points below the state average. And this, we'll come back to the math. I'll explain about the algebra and what impact that has because not all students take the regular eighth-grade math. Science, which, again, was only administered to grade eight, we actually were only one point off the state average, and this test is yet to have any accountability to it. It's in a field pilot, what's the term I want, pilot stage. Now, breaking it down by school, this is Bunker Hill. We're looking here at the percentage of students who met or exceeded the state benchmark, okay? So, that meant that these students were all in good stead. They weren't approaching expectations, either hit it or they exceeded it. And in grade six, you can see, or ELA is at fifty-three percent, more than half. Grade seven and grade eight, ELA is all over half. When it comes to math, the results were not as good, but here is where I want to point out that when it comes to grade eight, and you see this lower bar here, ninety-four percent of the algebra students who did not take this grade-eight math test were at or above expectations. And then we have the green, which is the science pilot. Chester Ridge Middle School, you can see the light blue is sixty-five, thirty-nine, forty-three. This is percentage of students who were proficient or above. You have lesser results in your math, and then, of course, at the algebra level, all these students were pulled out, and you're always going to see in eighth-grade math, a lower level of achievement because so many students took algebra and had a different test. And then the science. Finally, Orchard Valley Middle School, you can see right away, seventy-four percent of the Algebra I students succeeded or met. We actually have a couple of students taking Algebra II at Orchard Valley. They all hit or were above. ELA is sixty, fifty-two, fifty, and then the math is at the twenty-eight, twenty-six. So, we have, we know where the challenges are, and that's where we're going to focus this year. The high school ELA proficiency test, this is the NJSLA. So, the state average was seven forty-six. We scored a seven thirty. I do want to throw in that these students will eventually have to take the GPA in the junior year. Our juniors this year, who took that test and don't even need to do anything with it, exceeded the state average. So, we now know what we have to do. We have two years to get these freshmen ready for the GPA administration, where it will become a test of record. Mathematics at the high school level, you can see that Algebra I, four points, pardon me, yeah, Algebra I, four points below the state, geometry, a little bit below the state, and we could have scaled this differently because we're only doing increments of ten here, so let's keep that in mind. And then Algebra II, which is more challenging, seven twenty-eight as opposed to the seven forty-three state average. And there's our science preliminary results in the field test. Okay? So, for students who met or exceeded the grade-nine ELA in mathematics, and I referred to this earlier, this twenty-eight percent here, the state average for this is in the thirties, so it's not way off. And then we have Algebra I. Now, these are the students who take Algebra I sort of off-pace. They didn't have it in eighth grade, okay? So, you're going to see different results there. Geometry and Algebra II at the thirty-seven percent. This is exceeding or meeting expectations. Grade eleven, science, again, it's a pilot test. There's not much we can derive from this, but fourteen. Gretchen.
So, these are awkward slides because some grade levels are mine and some fall into the secondary level, but this is a breakdown of ethnicity and race in ELA in the state assessment. So, if you're looking at just ELA, our white population is in light blue, our black population is in dark blue, Asian is in the lighter green, like a teal color, and the Hispanic population is in dark green. So, I mean, if you look through this pretty consistently through the grades, you can see that our Asian population is scoring in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, at a higher percentage rate, although there are a limited number of Asian students. So, just keeping that in mind. As you can see, you can kind of follow the trajectory of those demographics. Yep. And then, if we look at mathematics, I'll let you do that one because it goes into the high school.
So, I'll point out what might seem a little odd is any place where you see a zero that meant that there were no students in that subgroup to measure. If you see a star, it means that there were not sufficient numbers according to the state protocols to have it count. So, it could be in the single digits, as low as that. And so, what you see here in the secondary area is the trending is very similar to what Gretchen just described. You're going to see high achievement in Asian, and then you're going to see it go down as we go here, but white is next, then Hispanic, and then black population. So, we know what we need to do, and we, now that we have the data, again, it's baseline data, and it's not longitudinal. So, we don't know what patterns are, but we can break patterns, and we can make new ones, and that's the positive part of it. Okay? Then we have the science results, which are going to be similar. The economically disadvantaged subgroup is represented on this slide, and these are the percentage, again, who met or exceeded expectations. Grade three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine is where that's measured at this Economically disadvantaged in the math arena, geometry and Algebra II were not represented well enough to measure. And then science, again, with limited results to work with. Okay? So, here we have Students with Disabilities subgroup, how they performed on ELA. Grade three, we can't measure, the five oh four, the darker blue is the five oh four population, the lighter blue is the IEP, or Students with Disability, population. Now, math for Students with Disabilities or five oh four. You can see that in five oh four, sometimes they outperform, they have a different classification, you might say. And then science, again, with limited results. You want to do the Ls?
So, this looks like a typo because the numbers are identical, so I had to take a double take, but the access test for Ls is the test that we utilize for our English Language Learners. We did take this test in 2021, although it was difficult to administer, we did do that. So, we actually remained the same. Our elementary students were an average of three-point-five as a score. This year, they went up to, in 2021, they were three-point-five, and then in this year, this past spring, they were three-point-seven. And the same is true for our secondary students. We do have a lot more elementary English Language Learners that are at those grade levels, but we have just a few at the tested grades in the secondary, but I thought that was very interesting that those numbers were identical. So, ongoing data review. So, now that we have this data, now what, right? So, there are some things that we have and always have done, and things that we'll get better at, but we really do look at our student achievement data and reporting analysis regularly, and we look, we start with our local assessments as well. So, we use the STAR assessment. Many families are aware of that. We send home the progress of that. We look at that, but we also look at our benchmark assessments. We look at our, you know, our grading as well to look at any local assessments and how are we faring towards those standards that we know are going to be assessed on the NJSLA. We have an ongoing revision of our selection process for tiered supports. What does that mean? What students get extra supports? What students might need remediation? What students might need a double dose of a program or supplemental support, or an additional program, or an after-school program? So, we look at those options through our tiered support system. And then, we do look at our state achievement data review. So, what you don't get to see, but that administrators will see, is actually how students performed on various standards. If we were to give that to you, it'd be like eighteen pages per standard, but we pile through that, and we look at those standards, and then we identify what standards were we weak in. And sometimes we'll notice, like, actually, only one student got tested on that standard because it was a test question. So, that gives us some information. We'll think, "Oh, wow, we did really well," or "We did poorly," but it's only one student. But for the majority, it's most of our kids, and we can really start to look at the standards using those achievement descriptors and that data to start developing plans. But we not only use NJLSA, we use the START Strong, we use GPA at the high school. So, we look at these achievement datas to help put students onto plans or into special programs so that we can help them. I talked a little bit about the analysis of those evidence tables, which are written by various standards and how we performed on those standards. And then, we also really look at establishing assessment consistency. We don't want the first time for a student to take the test on a computer to be on the day of the test. We want them to have those technology-enhanced features throughout their daily work, throughout the work that they are assessed on, on a routine basis, throughout their benchmark assessments, their unit tests. So, we use different platforms, and I'll talk about that, help us do that. We have teacher dated day meetings. It could be from two to three days, depending on the level, but we meet individually or groups with teachers, and we go through their data, and again, we help individualize supports and provide supports to those teachers so that they can provide supports and/or put students on those plans. And then, we also organize our teachers into PLCs because everything that we give to everybody is called our Tier One Support. So, that's our universal program. And we take a look at our universal program, and if teachers are saying, "In my class, I'm not seeing these results," so I'm going to do a plan-do-study-act cycle of improvement. So, our teachers in PLCs pick that. They pick goals of things that they're seeing within their own population of students, and then they develop a plan with a SMART goal and achievable action steps that they're going to use to try to remedy the trends that they are seeing within their own localized environment or school or grade level. And then, I'm just going to talk a little bit about elementary intervention strategies. So, we have interventionists and specialists that provide support. I talked a little bit about the fact that we have a tiered support model. We use Schoology Assessment and Eureka Squared Math Assessment technology, enhanced items on those assessments to practice for the test. on those assessments to practice for the test. We provide additional time programming, supplemental programming, and summer programming. As you know, we did this past summer Lit Camp Beable, and we offered iXL to all of our families at home. We offer parent nights, family nights, and cyber nights. We're starting a creation of a parent resource library of these recorded events, live and in person. And we are creating, or we have already distributed, I should say, parent guides for modules of ELA and math, and they're shared prior to the implementation of the module or unit. Things that we do in primary ELA, because it all starts at the beginning, right when they're young. So we have coaching this year going on with a consultant from Read, Write, Connect. Her name is Leah Mermelstein. She's a published author who really works on the science of reading and developing those practices into our work. We provided our staff with toolkits and handbooks. We do professional development about small group instruction for particularly ELA, not just skill-based, but also strategy-based. We implemented screeners, Early Bird and AMIRA particularly, to identify students who may be at risk for dyslexia. We also implemented AMIRA reading into small group rotations. We have professional development planned for Fast Forward, AMIRA Learning, Learning A to Z Integrity, which is a phonemic awareness program. And then we did create last spring and are actively working with our Dyslexia Committee to really streamline the early intervention requirements and make sure that they are efficient and evidence-based. In grades three through five in ELA, we are continuing our implementation with WIT and Wisdom. It's a standards-aligned ELA program, which is all green in Ed Reports. We're enhancing our independent reading protocols and training, particularly through our reading specialists are going through an online course from Jennifer Severalo called Strategies in Action: Reading and Writing Methods and Content. And every teacher in grades three, four, and five that teaches ELA has the access to Strategies to Go app, where they can record how to support students independently in their reading. We're using Beable with our fourth and fifth grade students, which helps students improve their lexile levels. And we also use the American Reading Company, which is also all green in Ed Reports, for our pull-out placements. Ongoing training and coaching in ELA exists from Great Minds and from American Reading Company, and we use a lot of different electronic tools. iXL, Raz Kids, Fast Forward, really depending on what the student's need is, so we have an offering based on their skill needs for enrichment or for remediation. And then if I move into math, again, we use Eureka Math Squared, again, all green in Ed Reports. We have math standards-aligned assessments. Again, that comes right from the platform. We, this year, have leadership and teacher coaching sessions. So that's been fabulous. We've already had our first one, and our next one's coming up in a couple of weeks. We're going to have coaching sessions that exist with the company, and we've had a lot of success with our first round. We are partnered with the U.S. Department of Education for Math for All. It's giving access to all students, particularly specialized students, to the regular ed content. And how do we do that? And they use the different neurodevelopmental lenses, and we're being trained on that. And we are on year two of our training implementation. We utilize the FIRST in math program to build our math fact fluency, as well as the full practice gyms. Zern is an online supplemental program that helps remediate some of those skills from Eureka Math that they may have to go back and fill in, that they may be missing. And again, we use iXL and other programs to specialize and tailor the learning to meet the needs of the students. Okay, sorry, still me. So intervention strategies for our administrators. And I think this is important, and I'll save Steve from saying it again. We are working with consultant Tracy Severance, Teach for Results this year, who's really working with us to help analyze not only our local assessments, but gearing us up to improving our NJSLA performance. We are continuing and enhancing our multi-tiered systems of support, and we are doing learning walks in ELA and math. We're doing spotlight visits in Eureka Math Squared classrooms. We have administrative training on programming in Eureka Math and WIT and Wisdom. And then our administrators do participate in the Math for All trainings and debriefings.
So I'm going to try to cover the math and ELA interventions together because they're so similar at the 6 to 12 level. So let's start out with the fact that we do employ a universal screener, 6 to 11, to determine lexile reading levels and math levels. And that data is then used with other tools, such as formative assessment and recovery of learning processes, where we're giving students a chance to attain those standards more than one time. With all of that data, that is analyzed, and it is used to help place students in Tier Two and Tier Three supports. And again, the average student in an ELA or math class is in a Tier One class. If there's a co-teacher, or what we're calling a tiered support teacher, that's a Tier Two. And then we even had some Tier Three strategies, so I'll go on with that. So we refine the screening process for identifying these students who need the Tier Two and Tier Three supports. Grades, attendance, other indicators, teacher recommendation. And then we put them in these tiered support classes to get additional instruction. We have, in the math and ELA area, at middle level, we have a math supplemental class. This is an additional class that students can be placed in for extra support. And in ELA, we call it Elevate. It's an acronym. And these classes tend to be on the smaller side and are more intense, and maybe groups of two, or maybe even one-on-one instruction is indicated in those settings. We also have adopted in recent years, actually during the pandemic, the Beable Life Ready Literacy Program, which Gretchen mentioned. This is a Tier Three intervention for individual students that's used in the Elevate class. So the students are getting their own adaptive learning pathway in a small teacher ratio where they are getting individualized learning. Then we have our Summer Spark Program, which is a Tier Three intervention. Last month at the board meeting, that was presented and was really a raving success. I was very happy to share that information from Mrs. Barnett. And this is English's Oversight. Extensive work has also been done, once we get this data, on horizontal and vertical articulation. Well, what does that mean? Well, what's going on in fifth grade math that we need to know when we continue instruction in grade six? And we've seen a real good transition there, as you saw in the test scores from last spring. What about teachers on the same subject, same grade level, across three schools, or at the high school? That's the horizontal articulation. What are the differences in performance that we're seeing? What are the gaps? What are the overlaps? And then ongoing use of Schoology Assessment Technology Enhanced Items to mirror the NJSLA, to get, as Gretchen mentioned, students prepared for the technology-enhanced tools and also the format of how the state is going to measure growth. Secondary math implementation. We have a seven-year cycle for all of our subject areas, where every seven years, they get to adopt or re-up a new program and evaluate. When Gretchen mentioned Ed Reports, that's the clearinghouse, I'll say, that rates these programs. And being all in green means that they are evidence-based, and they are getting the results that are predicted, and we're looking at those very closely when we do our adoption. So this year, we have identified rigor in math as the area that needs to be improved, as evidenced by almost 1,800 walkthroughs that we did prior to the pandemic. And those walkthroughs are going to resume this year, too, also, again, looking to measure rigor. Rigor is measured by Webb's Depth of Knowledge. That's one way. There are four levels. We're doing training at the school level, at the department level, to help teachers identify, are they on a Level One and Two, which is recall, comprehension, explain, list? Or are they getting to the three and the four, which require higher-order thinking skills and are more test prep? You know, that's where we want them to be. That's how life problems are identified and solved. That's what the Fortune 500 companies want. That's what the colleges want. They want people who can collaborate, think, and be creative. Alex Program in middle school is, again, another research-based online learning platform that provides adaptive learning for students in math. And then I mentioned the tiered support classes that we have in Algebra I at the high school. That will be layered up to geometry next year. Geometry is an adoption this year and implementation next year. Everything else, 6 to 12 in math, was implemented this year. You want to do this?
I covered this.
Yeah, all right. We mentioned this already. I think the overarching thing to say here is that I've never seen, I've been here 34 years, I've never seen, you know, MTSS structure stronger than what we're doing now. I've never seen a more cohesive program and focused effort on analyzing student data and closing the gaps and improving student performance. I'm very hopeful for this year, and we're looking forward to the next set of data that we receive. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for bearing with us.
Steve, I had a quick question, and thank you very much. I know that that was hours and hours of work putting all of that together, so I really do appreciate it, because that's a lot, a lot of data that spans a whole lot of different moving parts. I know that this is probably going to be just ongoing as you continue to look at data. Can we look at other districts that are comparable in, you know, size and socioeconomic and demographics and see what their scores? Because I feel like when you're comparing to the state, that has so many different aspects, it's kind of hard to see. So I didn't know if that was possible.
Yeah, so there used to be district factor group comparisons. I think they stopped that around 20 years ago, actually, that gave us our peers that we could compare to. So all I do know, we have networks in Gloucester County we can refer to and possibly get some comparisons. We have colleagues, and we have a curriculum consortium, so we can try looking into that.
And what about the school performance reports, too? Do they kind of present with similar data as this, that kind of gives different scores and percentages?
Yeah.
I think that might be helpful as well.
Yeah, they are going to be publicly available.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes. But the most recent one so far is 19?
Yeah.
I think. So we actually have something on our desk right now regarding that that just came in, so we will be looking into the next steps for getting the school performance data to the state so they can generate the reports.
And I think it's great that, sorry, that we have the new math program, because clearly math is an area that is weak, and we probably won't see the real benefits till they're tested in, you know, third grade. But I think luckily, we got a new math program, and we're moving in the right direction regarding, you know, the math scores.
Right, and I just want to say, Gretchen touched on it, when you look at evidence statements, some of these things look good or not as good, but when you look at the evidence statements and you see, out of 25 standards tested, we were right at or above the state average on 20, and four or five of them, either zero students got or one student got. And sometimes we were above the state average on the one student. So I kind of like disregard those to a certain extent, because the state's gathering evidence on those and trying to craft questions for future tests.
Steve, I have a question. Looking at the charts that revolve around middle school, when you get the, I don't know what that, why that's doing, but anyway, when you, can you hear me okay? I know we're getting a new sound system soon. The charts of our middle level, when you get the data from the state, do you get data that shows what the state average is for met and exceed? In other words, on the chart that you show, you show what percentage of our kids met or exceeded. Are you able to show what the state has met or exceeded?
I don't think.
We showed that in the district slide. They show it by grade level.
By grade?
By grade.
So when I show grade three, we were above the state.
Right, right. I'm just talking about, but I'm talking about met or exceeded.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yes, yes.
It is, okay. Okay. Same thing on these charts. When the students take the math portion, they're not, if they're in algebra, they're not taking a separate math test. They're all taking the same one. Is that correct?
If you're taking algebra and you're in eighth grade, you're taking a different test than the other eighth graders.
Oh, okay, you are.
So that's why algebra can span like three grade levels, really. That's why we lump that all together sometimes.
Okay, so if I'm an algebra student in middle school, I am going to get a test that's going to test me on algebra?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It actually might go beyond into Algebra II, just to be able to measure students who might have greater capacity, because we don't want to cut it off and say, all right, we're only going to take you this far, when they actually know this much.
Okay. All right, now, we have criteria for algebra in the middle schools. That's part of the, I guess, the gifted program in the middle schools. I have a question. If our students are being placed in algebra based on criteria, when you look at the three middle schools and the algebra met or exceeded, there definitely is a discrepancy in terms of the scores. Anything that you could shed light on why?
I would say, at one of the schools, they tend to have more sections of it than the other two, and that might have a bearing on it. Things are in a state of flux, I will say, in the schools. Things are shifting. Socila conditions have had certain impact on it, and we're looking at that, but we're not finished looking at data yet, because we need to get the bigger picture. So when, we'll go back, we'll take this back to the math supervisor and see if we can get better answers for that.
Yeah, that would be an interesting thing, I think, to explore, especially with algebra being the only subject matter that you have specific criteria for someone to get into. I would think that the meeting or exceeding expectation would be more in line. Just my thought. Thank you.
What you're bringing up is something we've noticed. Like, if you're excelling in the course, you should be doing well on the state test. So we're looking for that reliability to be improved.
Just a quick question. Do we have data pre-COVID? Can we see, like, how much we've slid to get an idea of, like, what we should be shooting for to get back to?
2019, and right before that, we had Park. So with that big gap, it doesn't really make sense to compare those two. What I will say is we do have the Start Strong, which we just took in September, which we will be presenting to you as well. And we're using all of these as multiple measures moving forward, but it wouldn't have been appropriate to do that comparison.
Okay. I mean, when I look at the aggregate data, I mean, it's disturbing, and I see it, it's a trend that happened across the country. We're not alone in what's happened here, but it is what it is. And it's nice to see that we've got practical ideas of what we're going to do to get those scores back up. But I'm always a firm believer in setting a goal, right? Like, what should be our goal to get to? Should we be happy with the state average? I personally wouldn't be happy with the state average. I think our community should be shooting for, be better than the state average. And as a board, right, one of the things they talk about is us setting goals. It'd be good for us maybe to set some realistic goals and see how we go about achieving them. I'm sure, as you guys analyze the data, that's something that you're going to be coming back with as well.
I have another follow-up question, again, related to the math in the middle schools. When you analyze the data, for instance, in eighth grade, in all three middle schools, 13% in eighth grade in one school, 4% in another grade, another school, 4% in another school. Four, four, and 8% of the eighth-grade math students met or exceeded the, you know, expectations. Is it, has there been, is there any connection, then? Those students actually missed two years of school with the pandemic, because I noticed that in sixth and seventh, you don't have that low of a number. Can that be attributed to the, you know, the situation that they were in in terms of the pandemic not being in school? And are we going to be looking to see how we can close that gap?
So I think you saw the beginning of it in the grade six math scores, where there was continuity with fifth- there was continuity with fifth and the strengthening that's happened at that level. This new program that we're adopting at middle level is evidence-based. It has the rigor in it that we identified as a weakness earlier, and training is going on to help teachers to become more accustomed to it. And I, I have to say that we are looking for much better results this year. There, there's going to be renewed efforts. We appreciate the support the board is showing for this. This is our leading indicator, frankly, and we have to do better, and we will.
Okay. Any more questions? All right. Moving on, the Director of Assessment, Data Technology, Registration, and School Community Outreach, Kathryn Carey, will give an update to the Board of Education with a report.
Okay. Superintendent Search. The district continues to solicit the opinions and feedback of the Washington Township community members as our comprehensive search for a permanent superintendent of schools remains ongoing. Your input is important and valued, and we invite you to take part in a community forum being hosted by the consulting firm of Hazard, Young, Atia, and Associates on Thursday, October 20th at 6:00 PM at the Washington Township Playhouse in the 1112 auditorium. You can also express your views through a survey that is posted on our splash page on the district website. We're grateful for your interest in helping us identify a dynamic leader who will become the face of the district for the coming years. The Washington Township Presidents Council will sponsor the 2022 Meet the Candidates Forum moderated by Janet Fisher Hughes from the League of Women's Voters in Camden County in the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Boardroom here at 206 East Holly Ave on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The event will introduce the 11 petitioners seeking five available seats on the Washington Township Board of Education. Candidates will field questions posed by interested Washington Township residents in attendance at the forum. A live feed of the event will be shared on the district's YouTube channel. The program will also be taped in its entirety and aired on WTTV, Channel 9 on Comcast, and Channel 36 on Verizon in the weeks preceding the November 8th school board election. The Washington Township School District offers a variety of assistance programs to help families in need. These programs are coordinated through our community service advisors and school counselors. If you feel like your family can use assistance for a Thanksgiving meal or holiday gifts, we have a form posted on our district website that must be completed by November 1st. All information will remain confidential. If you have any questions or if you'd like to know how you can help, please contact any of our middle-level Future Act advisors, Maddie Cubic, Heather Finn, or Amanda DeCristo. And finally, the district recently conducted a fundraiser for Making Strides Against Breast Cancer and was able to raise $2,308 to donate to the American Cancer Society. So thank you to all those who assisted us in our efforts for this great cause. Thank you.
Thank you. May, may I have a motion to approve, sorry, may I have a motion to approve the correspondence listed?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for September 2022. May I have a motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, is there any old business?
Can I take a little?
No, no for that.
I have something for old business. We had a presentation from Terry Lewis from the School Boards Association that we belong to, and I, I'd like to make a motion that we, we contact Terry Lewis to have her come out and help us craft school board goals. I think she made a, a pretty good argument that, you know, it, we probably should have that. I, I don't believe we have done that in the past year, especially with a new superintendent coming on board. So I'd like to make a motion. Anybody second it? I don't know.
Second.
Who's seconded? Natalie. Okay. Do I need to roll call or is all in favor? Any, any discussion?
I think it's a good idea. I just wonder about the timing with, I guess it would be post-election and everything else, you know. Be good, maybe we could get Terry's opinion on when would be a good time to do that. I agree, it's a great thing to do, but would you do that with the newly formed board in the January timeframe potentially?
Yeah, that would be a good idea to ask her opinion. I know there are many of us, at least four of us who are brand new. So maybe we could reach out to Terry and ask her, is that something we should do before January or after January?
Yeah, I'd like to modify that motion because we have the holidays coming up and it's going to be crazy to get her here. So I would like to make an amendment to that motion to do it once the board in January takes place.
Is that what you're going to say, Eric? Were you going to say that?
It's going to have to be yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
So do you want to redo your motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we contact Terry Lewis in order for her to come out and help the board craft school board goals after the new, I guess, the new board is sworn in.
Okay, I'd second that. Roll call. Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DiMaio?
Yes.
Mrs. Galanero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
For old business, real quick, I don't know if it's old or, can we just get an update as far, we have people here from support staff, just an update on like what's the next step and what's happening?
I don't really think that would be appropriate for right now.
Just a date of a meeting, just an idea, like, I don't, not specifics.
There's a meeting later tonight.
Okay.
That's all. Great. I'd like to make, before we open to public, I want to remind everybody that you need to fill out a yellow card and that you have five minutes to discuss what you want to discuss or question, and the yellow cards could be handed in. So I'd like to motion to open to public.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You in chime it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hope we asked your name correctly.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm just going to touch about, I'm glad there's been a meeting scheduled for later tonight, and I, I wrote this a couple weeks ago, but I just want to bring it to light and put it all in your minds going forward. We find ourselves once again beginning a new school year without a valid contract, and it's not a sudden problem, and it didn't come out of nowhere, and we've been waiting for months to meet with the board because we're all aware of the political dance that both sides are expected to do prior to any resolution or real conversation. Needless to say, it's been canceled, been rescheduled, been canceled, and now we're on the eve of getting something done, which is great. We're aware that ours is not the only group that's having some issues, but it felt like we were the ones that didn't have a precedent at the timetable. We've come this evening to maybe give you a visual note and make it a priority. So let me paint you a picture. Among the faces assembled here tonight, if you choose to do so, you'll meet the most selfless persons with the biggest hearts you will ever possibly meet in your lifetime. Included here are bus drivers, those who charged with getting our children to and from school safely for 180 days, no matter the weather, the tears or the tantrums that happen en route, and believe me, they do happen. Tonight, the maintenance staffs here, those who find a way to fix the broken because there's no money in the budget to purchase new. The custodial staff is present. You may not recognize them without their Ghostbuster backpacks zapping everything that doesn't move after COVID, but usually they're whizzing by with a mop and a trash can. And when we return to in-person learning post-COVID, that team doubled down and made it possible to return safely. We have our paras, the glue that keeps the classrooms running. Some of them are the single positive constant in these children's lives. They are tank fillers, they are encouragers, and at times, the only protectors that these kids can count on. We have an amazing teaching staff here in Washington Township. I know, I graduated from here in 1984. But our non-instructional staff, our paras, are just as important to both students and staff. We're blessed to have food service staff that makes sure our kiddos get a good nutritious meal and snacks, because sadly, if you stop to think, in our schools, it's the only place for our kids to get a nutritious hot meal the whole day. And that's the truth. And, and I wonder what they're eating at night, and this could possibly be the only meal they get, and we give that to them. Our cafeteria playground assistants get more steps in their day than some athletes. I'm sure they control the chaos that is recess and keep us all safe enjoying their downtime. Our team of health assistants are more than ladies who bandage knees and give out magic ice. COVID did not break this group. They masked up, they dove in. Some even got certified in contact tracing on their own. They've handled heated calls from distraught and confused parents with pleasure, and they became a stealth tracking unit like the FBI, but with smiles and bandages. A day in the life of a support staff member may contain, but is not limited to making copies, cutting bulletin board pieces, laminating, greening buses, children serving breakfast, changing accidents, wiping tears, holding trash cans, holding hair, six direct coughs to the face, wiping noses, eight trips up and down the hallways, diving without hesitation onto the floor to create a, a head during a meltdown, a trip to the nurse for your own injuries after getting bit and punched in the stomach, picking grapes out of your hair when lunchtime somehow melts into gym class, blowing your whistle, bloody noses, bloody knees, itchy legs, a sudden jog out of the room to recapture a friend who's had a sudden energy bubble that they must get out, saying, "Great job, great choice, and I'm so proud of you" 50 times a day, and then 20 seconds for yourself in the bathroom to cry because sometimes it breaks your heart. Tossing half your lunch out so you can get back because we're short-staffed and the kids need you, plunging toilets sweeping floors, waving at bus windows as the buses leave, feeling exhaustion unfolds you like a blanket, yet planning for tomorrow right away. These are the people in red. These are your support staff. They show up every day to do a job with all of their heart and soul for substandard pay and incredibly difficult situations. Most of us give 110% every day because we understand that though the public school system may be a business, we know that our product is a living and breathing thing. It's children, so we give them the best of us. We deserve to be given the time and the conversation and to be heard by the board. Making time for us should be a top priority because our children are ours. Township prides itself in being together with pride, but remember all these faces, because together, we are priceless. Thank you for your time.
Abigail Hedley, please.
I'm going to try to be quick, but I'm going to be emotional, and it might make me slow. So, my name is Abigail Hedley. I have four children, age two to nine in the district, and we moved here for the school system in 2018. I wanted to speak about my son, Mason. Unfortunately, many people in society have a hard time thinking or putting...
Not to take any of your time, obviously, it's your own right to waive any confidentiality.
It's fine. My son's Mason Hedley.
Just wait for it.
Unfortunately, many people in the society have a hard time thinking or putting themselves in other people's position. So I hope that I can give you a window into my experience. My son is nine and goes to Herfield Elementary. He has high functioning autism. Please excuse me, I'm sorry. He is a sweet, funny, empathetic, beautiful human, but he can't perform everything the way that kids his age typically do. He will go all day without drinking water because he has so many thoughts, he just didn't think to take a sip. He has never wandered in school, but he has outside of school twice. He is super smart, but if someone doesn't tell him to continue with his work, he will spend the entire class thinking about extinct animals and entirely miss the lesson. Some of you may not understand the need for quality support staff, but that's only because you must not see firsthand how important it is to someone like Mason and a mom like me. I have a hard time every morning getting my son to walk onto the bus. Every single day of school, it's a complicated dance to get him on. Mind you, dropping him at school is even worse. What you may not know is the bus drivers there for him to be patient, to help him with his seatbelt if needed, and to watch over him and make sure he's not being bullied, to make sure while my son is thinking about what video game he wants to create, that he gets off the bus at the right stop. I need someone who cares about my son to watch over him. I pay the babysitter on date night more than some of our support staff, and I bet if you have kids, you do as well. If Mason was your child, you would want him to drink water so he doesn't get constipated and need an enema. You would want aid to point out a ball flying towards his face at gym. You would want someone to make sure he gets to school and home safely. You would want the cafeteria worker to smile and help him pick a lunch. You would want a janitor that knows your son's name and directs him back to class if found wandering. Mason needs a caring support staff for all of these things to happen. These aren't just babysitters, a foot on the gas pedal, a scoop of food on a tray, a mop to a dirty floor. They are helping my son be a part of society. These people should be paid what they are worth. To my son, Mason, they mean the world. These people need to be qualified to help my son in ways you wouldn't understand unless you had a child with disabilities. How do you expect our schools to retain such staff members if we aren't even paying them enough to survive? Not only is it a disgrace to treat our support staff this way, but it's a disgrace to our children. These people are with our children every day. They love our children, and I have seen it. I shouldn't have to say anymore. I shouldn't even have to bring my son into it. But with all the canceled meetings and refusing to negotiate, obviously, the people making the decisions forgot what their job was. Let me remind you, you are to provide, provide a safe and enriching environment for all children with all abilities. By not attempting to retain quality staff, you are telling my son, Mason, that he doesn't matter. You are telling all disabled children that they don't matter. For those people out there that still can't step out of that side of themselves, let me say this. When we no longer have busing or aids for our children and people stop moving to this town, you will be affected. I'm part of multiple groups across New Jersey for parents of children with special needs. It gets around if we don't pay our support staff. It gets around if we pay so low that we get people who don't care about our children. Parents talk, especially autism parents. And I'm the first one that has boasted about the incredible people I've met on my son's journey. I've spoken at retreats and fundraises about how caring the staff has been, how I feel so lucky to have chosen this district for my son's education. If we continue to go down this path of running from our responsibility, running from paying people what they deserve, all of that will change. According to the most recent data from the CDC, New Jersey now has the second highest rate of autism in the nation. One in 35 children are diagnosed, and it continues to rise. With those statistics, it is clear to me that one in 35 parents will be looking at how we take care of our support staff. Like me, they will want their child to be raised in a district that is willing to pay for the best people to care for our children. Not doing so will force parents like me to move or request out of district placement, which will cost all of us tax dollars. Eventually, the one in 35 will stop moving to this town, our school rankings will drop, our house prices will drop, and then where will we be? I shouldn't have to say all this. I shouldn't have to say all this. It should be standard to pay people not only so they can survive, but allow them to live a real life. I'm asking you to take care of my child. I'm asking for you to keep my son safe. I'm asking you to want a caring person ensuring my son's safety and well-being from the moment he leaves my arms to the moment he flops back to them.
Abigail, I'm sorry. I hate to cut you short because I know you very much--
I have like a couple sentences left. Please. I will end with this. The true character of a society is revealed in how it treats its children. Nelson Mandela. Let's show our town what kind of character we have. Let's show New Jersey and the 1 in 35 parents of children on the spectrum that we value the people caring for our children. They are nothing but the best in our town. Let's protect our children, pay our staff not just a living wage, but pay our staff so we can retain the highest level of staff. Keep Washington Township a desirable place to live for our kids with all abilities. Not doing so is discrimination.
Thank you. Bonnie Rafficelli, and I'm hoping I pronounced your name correctly.
Hi, good evening. I'm a bus driver in Washington Township. I raised four kids in this school system. I started as a bus driver 15 years ago. From 15 years ago until now, drivers have received less than a $4 increase, cost of living increase. We are losing drivers and unable to get new ones because other companies pay more than we do. My bus aide also started here 14 years ago. He has had so little of a pay increase that he still makes less than minimum wage after 15 years. We have young drivers with new babies that are unable to return to work. Why? Because their babysitters make more than we do. The school aides at ECC take care of the children, teach them, change their clothes, and change their diapers, yet they don't make as much as a daycare worker. Our drivers are up at 5:00 AM, they shovel their cars out at home, they drive to work before the streets are plowed, they walk a quarter mile to their buses to shovel the buses out before many of you get out of bed. Our food service staff go to school and prepare meals before the sun rises. Why do we do this? We do this for the children. We would all like to think that the support staff are part of the reason we live in a premier community. Our drivers could go to work at another company, we stay for the children. Some drivers have started with the children when they were three years old and have continued till they were seniors. The lunch staff stays for the love of the children. They could surely go to Wawa and make more money and get benefits. Last year, I followed a bus from another bus company, and on the back, it advertised bus drivers needed and the pay that they were paying. This year, I followed that same bus, that same bus company, only this time, this year, they're paying $9 more an hour. Someone there was appreciated. During the pandemic, our school was closed because it was too dangerous for a person, for people to go in-person learning. Our kitchen staff showed up, prepared breakfast and lunches for the children. Our custodial staff loaded those lunches and meals on township buses, and the township drivers drove them to grateful families. We showed up for the children. Those same parents were not only surprised, but very upset to learn that we were working without a contract for so long. We don't want you to hand us the yearly budget and say once again, there's no money in the budget for the support staff. We hope tonight that you truly have come to negotiate in good faith so we don't have to arbitrate. Don't make us choose between the children of Washington Township or ultimately having to support our own children. Don't put us on the back burner anymore. Eventually, someone gets burned. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Carol Chilla.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if there's been enough meetings with the support staff, but if both sides agree tonight, maybe something that you should consider is lifting the gag order. So then that way, people of the public, you can comment as board members, and we can get more details as to what exactly is going on in negotiations. So just a consideration in terms of going over ground rules. I don't know if they've been established, but something you may want to consider. So I wanted to come up and talk about a few different topics. First is the superintendent search. I'm just curious if anyone looked at the calendar for this week, because we're conducting the most important search that we could possibly do. We have homecoming, eighth grade orientation, all the middle schools have Halloween dances. I have no idea what else is going on, but those are just a few things. So we're conducting-- I attended the webinar last night, and we'll do my best to get to the in-person meeting, and I think a lot of parents feel the same way. Of all weeks in the district, this was not the week to pick. And I know that there's a lot of weeks that look like this, but this is a very busy week. So I was a little disappointed to learn that we were doing the most important function that you could do as a board, and it's this week. So just feedback and curiosity as to why this week was picked, so someone can answer that. And then I wanted to follow up from my comments last meeting about virtual meetings. I'm sure you probably have a silent groan, but I couldn't help but listen to Mr. Anderson. I don't see him here right now, but he had a compelling presentation about the effects of screen time on children, and I think it can also be translated into adults. So I just watched the presentation on test scores. Thank you, Gretchen and Dr. Gregor, for giving those presentations. It was obviously jarring and disappointing, and I think everyone is obviously has a lot of concerns. I can't help but say, look, as a board of education, you're all the leaders in the district to help this. And I think we can start by walking into the building for committee meetings and sitting with each other, talking about the test scores, like what can be done in the immediate, right? So there are certain things that I'm sure take a lot of planning, and it looks as though there's a lot of wonderful plans in place. But there's also probably some immediate things that can be done to recapture some of the learning. And I think as a board, it is incumbent upon you all to come physically into the building, right? We have our administrators come every day, the teachers are certainly in the classroom. We just had the support staff come up and say that they're there every day. As a board, you're supposed to physically be here. And I know that changed during the pandemic, but I think that we have to move forward, and we have to be here. I think it will help all of you. Terry Lewis was here and talked about coming together as a group. I know it's much easier to take a call, but I'll tell you, unless you're a professional facilitator, it is very difficult to get all the information that you need to make good informed decisions at board meetings over webinars. It has nothing to do with the length of time that they last. In fact, the longer they last, the more ineffective they are. I attended the webinar last night, and to say that it was a disappointment is an understatement. There was actually profanity used quite loudly, and if anyone was listening to it, it was like, oh, whoa, all right, I'm awake, now I'm listening. So it was not facilitated appropriately. There is ways to facilitate calls like that. It varied between 68 and 77 people, and there's a lot of things that you could do to make sure that you mute everyone's line while someone else is talking. But there's, I mean, we heard a lot going on in households at that time of the night if anyone was on. So I just, I say it, and I, you know, these are all wonderful attempts, just like the last meeting when it was assumed that the student session went well, right? I'm giving you feedback. It wasn't a great WebEx for parents to participate. It was not facilitated professionally and appropriately. And I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying, you all are, you're paying for the service. And I think if you were on, you would have been very disappointed. There was some great feedback from parents that spoke up, which was wonderful, but that may require a redo as well. I'm asking for someone to put a motion on the floor tonight to return to in-person meetings, at least through the end of the year. Come together as a board and be in this room. So I'm hoping that someone will make that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. What I can say is all those conversations regarding enrichment, programming, interventions will most certainly happen during instructional affairs, and I assume business as well because stuff kind of goes hands in hand. As far as the virtual meetings, I mean, yes, when you have a meeting over 50 people, that's very difficult to navigate. And yeah, there are ways to mute the, you know, the host can mute things and do things. I know we weren't really allowed to attend those meetings, so I don't know how that went, so thanks for the feedback. But as far as virtual meetings, like, I do have to respectfully disagree on the use of virtual meetings. I do, I do know what you mean as far as interviewing and body language and face-to-face and things like that, that is important. But I do really feel like our committee meetings have been very, very productive. I feel like we're getting stuff done. So I mean, that would be my, my take on that, as far as I think they are effective. I don't, I don't see an issue in the way the meetings are held, but that, you know, that's my opinion. Matt Piller.
Elaine, can I just make a comment real quick to Carol? You know, hearing the support staff come out and hearing them talk about they're here every day, and, you know, they show up 5:00 in the morning, they're here to lead at night. You know, I was a volunteer coach. I was there till 10:00 at night with some of the custodian staff, so I know that they're here in person. I do appreciate, you know, you saying, let's try and get, go live with the committee meetings. I don't oppose to them. I mean, I'm going to present that to the board. I don't oppose to go live. I don't oppose to go virtual either. I don't know any different because I haven't been on, I've only been on the board for a few months. So I would just like to ask others if they have any other comments about whether we could go live or do virtual committee meetings.
And we have had a lot of meetings where we've had to, just so you know. It's not like it's one or the other. We have had special meetings where we have met in person. Right, budgets, yeah. They're almost all in person.
I would say your new business will make a motion to consider it, and we can discuss it then.
Can I just have a question answered, though, about why this week was picked? It's not a back and forth, they just never got their question answered about why this week was picked in terms of superintendent search, child activities.
I don't think we had--
If you want to comment again--
Is required an answer? I've asked you, did you have your question answered?
This is, it's public comment, right? It's a public comment. I understand, I'm just simply saying, it's public comment. Nobody has an obligation to answer your questions. They can, they certainly can if they want, but you've sat, you've made your comments, you've sat down. Now they're trying to move on. I understand.
Why didn't you answer her question? I don't understand that.
I'm sorry?
You're new to the district, why didn't you answer her question?
Well, first of all, I wouldn't have the answer to your question, obviously.
Why didn't the board answer the woman's question? That's ridiculous. She asked a question, period. Answer it.
I don't have the answer. I don't know.
I just know that HYG had a calendar, they planned the dates. I think what was lacking is they did not have a calendar of the events that we had in the district, and I think that's where the difficulty became.
Carol, I'm guessing that it was probably unintended, but it did turn out, in a way that when you pointed out, you say we have a lot of activities, so, you know, you're probably pointing towards maybe there's a limitation, that people try to be in two places at the same time. Yeah. All right.
And as far as the meetings, could we bring to committee, can we talk about each-- ironically, can we bring to our virtual committee meetings? Sorry. Just bring to our meetings the option of in-person or not have conversation, you know, just in our committee meetings, if we do it now--
I would think it'd be a good idea during committee meetings. I don't have any feelings either way. I think that the ones that we've had have been very productive, but I can understand where in-person would also be a good thing, too. It's just time constraints. I know we all have kids, lives, and as you can tell, our board meetings are usually very long. So it's definitely something that we will discuss. Thank you, Carol.
Yeah, I agree with both of you, that I think we should bring it up in our committees.
You're referring to your committees, correct?
Yes.
That would be the correct--
Mary Ben. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Mary.
This gentleman--
Oh, Matt, you were before we--
Ladies first, my insist--
No, no, Matt, Matt, my, Matt, my apologies.
It's okay.
Yeah, I had passed the card over.
I would have let you go first, man. I would have been fine with that.
My apologies, Matt.
That is quite all right. I'll think about forgiving you. So something came to my attention. I want to get a little bit of clarification on this. There was, in a couple of the schools in the district, there's an after-school club called the Good News Club. It is a club that does after-school Bible studies for students, and it's run by the Child Evangelism Fellowship. Recently, they were told that they could not hand out materials anymore in a particular-- I don't know what it is, if it's a digital backpack of some sort. So I wanted to get some clarification on that, whether it was true. I did get, like, how that went down, if it was accurate, if someone could tell me about that. And the reason I bring that up is because these after-school clubs, you know, they create these little niche clubs for every little group of little subcultures in these schools for them to do after-school, not during school hours. So I want to make sure that materials are not being prohibited from being shared. And by the way, this is not without precedent. I want to say in '06, it was settled all the way up in the Third District Court of Appeals by Child Evangelism Fellowship versus Stafford Township. Stafford Township was fined for prohibiting the distribution of materials by the Child Evangelism Fellowship. So if you could clarify what happened there, I want to make sure that nothing unjust is happening there. And the last time I was here, I brought something up that kind of ties into this. Speaking of flying flags in the schools that are not the flag for our country, it's come to my attention that still in some of the classrooms at the school, we're flying the LGBTQ transgender flag. And I just, I want to, and the answer I was given is that it makes students in that community feel safe. And by all means, we want every student to feel safe in the school. However, I want to remind everyone that when we wave a flag, a flag is just not about who we protect, but who we prefer. And the second we prefer one group, we unprefer another group. And I want to ensure that we're not marginalizing anyone else. And I'll give you a case in point, because I guarantee if a teacher waved a NRA flag or a MAGA flag in their classroom, I'm sure that would not be allowed to stay up. So that being said, I want to make sure that we're not preferring one group above another. This is, again, not without precedent, because it wasn't that long ago that somebody waved a Blue Lives Matter flag at a football game. One student complained, and Principal Strout said, "No more flags." So I just want to make sure that we're not preferring one group on another, because if that's the case, then this prohibition of the distribution of materials at the elementary schools is even more disturbing and alarming. So if I can get some clarification on the first thing. And then there was some discussion pursuant to when I brought this up last time, they said, hey, maybe we should talk about just not having flags hanging in the school to prefer one particular ideological movement. If we remain with the one flag, that encompasses everyone under it, regardless of color, regardless of religion, regardless of political affiliation. Everyone's Americans. We prefer Americans, we protect Americans. That encompasses all people in your school and doesn't prefer one over another. So I wanted to get clarification on the first thing, please, and wanted to see if there was any discussion pursuant to me having brought that up at the last meeting I attended. Thank you.
Matt, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is it a case you heard that that particular flyer was denied their ability to hang it out, or the request for it to be distributed through our own, you know, digital means was the concern?
Yeah, I don't have the, I'm not really too sure. And that's why I'm just asking for clarification, because maybe you could look a little bit deeper into this. I can send you the case, I have it.
Yeah, if I could get your phone number, I'll do my work, and I'll call you.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And on the other one, I don't know, have enough of a deep dive to respond to that overarching point you made about the second part you had, that I would be able to respond intelligently tonight about that, quite frankly. That wouldn't be something I'd feel comfortable speaking to relative to your inferences, quite frankly. You know, I would not want to offend any of our students, that's for sure, or anything that were happening, okay? So I think that right now, response probably warrants no response. So I think that right now, response probably warrants no response.
Mary Ben. Thank you.
Got to jump on it. I wanted to say, last week, I was very happy that Terry Lewis came from the New Jersey School Board of Education. I was, it was very informative. I wish, I sure hope that you guys got as much out of it as I did. I've watched it several times. I watched it because I want to address a comment that was made, that I think many of us should feel offended by, that Dr. Ellis, I wish he were here, because he's the one who said it, and maybe Dr. Alexander can kind of shed some light on this as well. We were addressed as distractions. I watched it a couple times, because first I thought maybe he wasn't talking about the people coming up as distractions, but then it was made quite clear when he said that we fire it, everybody, fire, fire, fire. And this was a good night compared to other nights. So he totally meant the people that come up here and talk. So I kind of wonder how Dr. Alexander would take that as labeling people as distractions. Does that not fall under diversity, inclusion, equity, and belonging in a bullying rhetoric? Because I feel it kind of does. I feel like that's somewhat bullying. It's like the last time we had another school board president say, "This is falling on deaf ears." He's no longer here, but that was uncalled for. I feel like it's the blame game. He had the whole blame that it's our fault for the fact that things aren't getting done. So I guess, in some respects, let's talk about the distractions that do come up here, right? There's a lot of people who come up here, and there's a lot of things that happen once we do. Where would we be currently had the distractions not come forward, right? We wouldn't have the solicitor sitting here, we wouldn't have some of the new members on our board sitting here, we probably wouldn't even be doing the superintendent's search because we would just be okay with the way things were going. But the distractions that came forward and brought these things to your attention are the reasons we're doing these things. By the research, the Oprah requests, everything that we did, it was all in black and white. It's not made up. It was right there, and that's why this is all going on. So I just, I take offense to the word distractions. I think that was uncalled for, and perhaps we are owed an apology, not just me, but everybody who comes up here and speaks. There is a book, and since she came in and talked, this is actually a book that is written by the firm that we have here, one of the partners in the firm, David Rubin, wrote this book. It's The Ethical Educator. And I would recommend it for everyone to read. You can buy it online, it's available. It can apply to all leaders who are challenged with making difficult decisions in complex situations in education. So I, I would suggest it. It's actually, I haven't gotten very far, but so far, what I've read is very good. I also, I wanted to ask the question about when Terry Lewis said, "You should have goals," right? The goals should be in place. They're important, because when you bring in a superintendent, that's what they go by, right? They have to follow those goals that the board has for them, which is where the administration follows and everything else. All made a lot of sense. So I started thinking, do we have goals? Are they set in place? We should, right? Because we're already to October, they probably should have been done in a place before we even started the school year. So oddly enough, and you might not even know this, I know you don't, because no one said it tonight, February 22nd, 2022, some people weren't on the board at that point, but there were goals that were set, and they were approved on the report of the superintendent. And our 2022 board goals are academic goal, and there's a paragraph, equity goal, communication goal, and a finance goal. So the crazy part is, is here we have this board sitting here, y'all don't even know that, and you can't even answer to these questions, they're not even discussed. But again, you know, per Dr. Ellis, we're just distractions, but I'm glad that you maybe go back and look at your minutes, look at what you guys have done, and maybe you guys will know. But it's, it's very frustrating. So, thank you.
Ron Mukerini.
Yeah, I actually came to speak to Brian Ellis about his comments. Somebody sent me a snippet of what was said. At first, when I heard his commentary, I thought, eh, you know, I'm a little insulted. But then, the more I thought about it, I started focusing on another aspect of it. He kept saying we put out fires. I had to put out fires. And I kept thinking, of all the fires that he was talking about, yeah, they are fires. They are fires, and they are fires that were created by him and Mrs. Cozempel, and the other guy who resigned, I forget his name, DeNove, Mrs. DeMayo, Mrs. Gallinaro, to some degree yourself, Mrs. Clancy. Because you allowed these things to go on, and not only are you allowing them to go on, the same group, which is Children's First, that you all ran, it started in 2020, is running another slate again. And it's just designed, they're putting Children's First down, it's an insult to everyone's intelligence, it's a political slate, it's associated with the Democrat Party. And I heard somebody say, the woman was up here, and she said, "And the two sides," you know, talking about the Board of Education. There is no other side of Board of Education. The other people that are running for the Board of Education are not, have no similarities in terms of political parties and that sort of thing. They're not associated with each other. Mrs. Baker is running for the Board of Education. She probably ideologically, I don't know Mr. LaLiberty totally, but I have an insight into his personality, okay? And I guarantee you, she is the, almost the polar opposite of him, you know, on the, the political line, all right? Not totally, but in many ways. So they're not a political slate. And what happens when you have a political slate and candidates that get on the Board of Education, what you get is you get Julie Cozempel. That's what you get. You get somebody who, in fact, sometimes you get worse than Julie Cozempel, because they don't admit that they're politicizing the board. This woman came out and told everybody, "Yeah, I'm going to put my friend as superintendent and whatever," okay? And that's what this Children's First is all about. That's what they've all been about. So all this conversation about test scores, about the, the, the support staff, it all goes down the tubes, because when you have a political Board of Education that's politicized, reason takes a backseat. Kids take a backseat. That does not become the priority. You can make the best argument in the world up here, and if it goes against their political interests, they're going to tell you to get lost, okay, in a nice way. And that's exactly what Brian Ellis did. There is nothing, his response, first of all, shouldn't have been so defensive, okay? But second of all, you don't blame the fans for a losing team, okay? If you perceive what that lady was saying as a reflection on how you're running the Board of Education, Mr. Ellis, who's not here, then you should either argue that that's not the case, and we have a wonderful school system, and you're, and we're doing a great job, or, or you should have argued from the other perspective that you need to do a better job. You don't blame the fans, the cheerleaders, for not cheering loud enough, okay? That's exactly what was going on there. And you're not going to get anywhere in this district until this nonsense starts, stops. And the key to this, I hear about the superintendent's search and the survey, it's ridiculous, by the way, to give 2,000 kids a survey and only 80 adults answered it, okay? I think it's going to be a little skewed. But besides that, besides that, all that goes down the tubes, that has no bearing on anything until you straighten your act out. And I said it to Joe Bolendorf seven years ago, this district has no respect for the argument. Everything is weighed politically first, and then the argument's considered. If it's in your favor, then you go along with it. And a perfect example of that is, when the people that were coming out here were talking about, you know, what was in the health books, and it was getting crazy and crazy, I came out in support of the people who were on the Board of Education, because I, you know, I feel for kids that are going to have to be ostracized and, and pointed out because they're transgender or whatever, okay? I didn't like that, so I came out. But, but once I realized that the goal was not really those kids, that the goal is to make sure that so-and-so gets the professional contract, that we keep feeding this, this political machine around here, then I took exception to it, and the arguments I'm getting back are not valid ones. We're respecting nonsense, and when you respect nonsense as the argument and not the, the reasoning behind it, you're going to end up with a school system that's below par. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mukerini. Megan Watson.
Education is not a pie. Social-emotional learning is not a pie. We don't run out of space, we don't run out of love, we don't run out of education. To say that putting an LGBTQ flag in a classroom means we are choosing one set of students over another set of students, or we're excluding students, is absolutely preposterous. That is not what that means. I hope that we have LGBTQ flags in all of our classrooms, because all it means is that we are inclusive, not exclusive. We don't run out of education, we don't run out of love, we're not choosing one student over another. By having LGBTQ flags, it means that we're respecting all of our students. We are welcoming all of our students into the classroom. So I hope that we make a decision to include flags in all of our classrooms. Don't take them out.
Emily Reed.
Hi, I'd just like to provide a student perspective about LGBTQ flags being flown or just hanging in our classrooms. Many of the classrooms that I've been in that do have these flags have been the most productive classrooms I have ever had. Majority, a big majority of our students are LGBTQ, whether you know it or not. A lot of us are, and I know that personally, just by being in the school. The teachers that do fly these flags have personal connections, very personal connections, with the students that they have represented on their walls. I have felt so much more comfortable talking to my teachers who do have this, because I know that they're not going to judge me based on my haircut or information that they found out about me through other students or teachers, and I know that they support me no matter what. There is no disadvantage to having these flags flown. I mean, what are you going to do? Make someone upset about it? Like, that's just not a valuable reason. We are still people who just need to be represented, the same way we're represented by an American flag, that holds value to our character and to where we live, the same way as an LGBTQ flag holds value to my character and who I identify as. These people with these identities have struggled for long enough. We do not need to strip their identities from the walls that are already, that they are already put on by taking the flags down. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to say thank you to, to you for being brave enough. I think sometimes we forget that we are talking about human beings. We're not just talking about a flag, and it's some sort of just random symbol that represents something that we don't like that's political, because really, it isn't political. It's about ethics, it's about morality, it's about representing students who do hear all kinds of things. You don't hear certain students that are in a not-as-minoritized population hearing slurs regularly. You do if you're LGBTQ. It's, it's a thing. You can ask any student who is in that school, and they have heard a number of them. That flag is safety for them. Think about what it means to take it down to them, as opposed to just, you know, not having, it just, the thing that it says to them is that they're not valued anymore. And to me, that's way more important than any statement anybody else could make about what a flag should or shouldn't be.
Agreed.
I'd like to make a motion to close to the public.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Report of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve numbers one, two, and three.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Buery? Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinaro?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'd like to make a motion to approve Instruction Curriculum Number One.
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinaro?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes. Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion for policy second reading, numbers one through four.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallinaro?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery? No to one, yes to two, to four. Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes. Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve Student Activity Services, numbers one through three.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain to one, CB, yes to all, the rest.
Motion carries.
I'm not done yet. I was just hesitating, because you said you're abstaining on number one and initial CB.
And yes to the rest.
This is for student activities.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one? Oh, okay. Yeah. Yes, yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes. I make a motion for Human Resources, items one through 30.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Abstain to one, CB, initial CB, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinaro?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to accept Finance Facilities, number one through 19.
So moved.
Is that a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Buery?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinaro?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion for Special Education, numbers one through six.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The second was Scott. Scott made the second.
For what?
Finance. No, Special Education.
I don't know.
Scott made the second.
Scott made the motion.
No, he made the second.
Okay, who made the motion?
Kathleen, Kathleen, did you make the motion?
I did not.
Okay, Stacy?
Stacy made the motion.
Did you make the motion for Special Education?
I did. Sorry. She made it.
That's all right.
I was really agenda.
Any discussion on the Special Education? Okay, since there's no discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Burey?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
There is nothing under, no items at this time under negotiations. Is there any old, new business?
Yeah, I have something to bring up. I'd like to ask the attorney's opinion on this. There was some discussion about policy, and it came up with a policy that dealt with board members not accepting money from vendors, or vendors being able to get a, a position if they donated campaign money. The question is this, you cannot put in the policy that if someone breaks the policy, they're off the board, because obviously that has to go through the Ethics Commission. Can you, can you write in policy that that person, if they broke that policy, would not be permitted to be president of the board or vice president of the board?
The short answer is no. Board members cannot discipline other board members, just to be clear. You guys have no authority to remove someone from the board, to censure someone, to prohibit someone from holding a position on the board in the future. I mean, that's all done by board vote, by board vote, so the short answer is no.
Right. Yeah, there was some, some question that, you know, could we add more teeth to the policy? But basically, it's out of that realm. I just wanted to get clarification.
Yeah, I mean, when you, when you say teeth, I'm not exactly sure what you mean, but if, if it concerns disciplining or censuring board members or preventing board members from doing things in the future, then no. Perhaps I could look at the policy in the near future, and, and, you know, we could discuss how it could be changed to better get what you're looking for.
Yeah, it would probably just come under ethics violation.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
But that's separate. An ethics violation is, you know, a right that anyone, anyone could file ethics charges against any board member. It doesn't need to be laid out in a policy.
Gotcha. That, thank you. Just wanted to get clarification on that. Thank you.
Any else on your new business? Okay, I make a motion to open to public.
So moved.
The second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ron McCarney.
Yeah, I just wanted to stay around to give an example of the Charles Manson philosophy we seem to follow in this Board of Education and administration, which is no sense makes sense, all right? During the time that I was coming up here, that I, I stayed away from meetings for like two years, you know, I didn't have a horse in the race, so to speak, then I came, you know, I was asked to come out to these meetings by some of the same people who despise me now because of what was going on. And I did come out, and as I said before, I felt that was a priority. But then, as I came to these meetings, the same thing that I had spoken to Joe Bolendorf about, which is that we need to act on a higher level intellectually before we're going to start talking about test scores and new programs and everything else in our everyday lives. Now, here was a Board of Education that was espousing equity and diversity, and I'm all for that. In fact, my track record goes back further than any of these board members, for standing up against discriminatory policies that were set with how we sent kids through the district into what schools, impacting certain schools with high levels of, kids who were on reduced split lunch, and other schools had very low percentages, thus impacting on them. That's all part of institutionalized systemic discrimination, which leads to systemic racism. But let me give you a clearer example. When you hire people according to a who-you-know philosophy, and it wasn't just this attempted superintendent scam and scheme that she was planning, this has been going on for years. I could cite people sitting over there, one in the purple jacket, I could cite Mr. Gregor, I could cite a bunch of people who sat back and watched that nonsense go on, and maybe even orchestrated some of it, all right? And when, but the ultimate was, now you're coming out and admitting it that you want a scheme to put a superintendent in. Well, let me tell you something, that is institutionalized discrimination. That were, that system, that way of doing business works against minorities, the LBGQ community, you know, any minority, because it follows, especially blacks and Latinos, because it follows that they're not going to know as many people in positions of power who are of, you know, that they socialize with, not in all cases. So this Board of Education thought, well, because the scheme involved putting a person who was black in as a, or half-black or whatever, in as a superintendent, then it's okay. No, because in the long run, that way of doing business, that accepted way of doing business, overall, percentage-wise, is going to work against people of color, people who are minorities, people from lower-income families, okay? You get two kids graduating college, one of them has a dad who's somebody in the community, knows this one and that one, goes golfing with the superintendent, Joe Bolendorf or Mr. McGee, and the other kid graduates, his father, you know, he was a custodian at a hospital, and nobody knows, knows him from Adam, and the kid is superior to the other kid. I got news for you, Washington Township, that superior candidate is not getting the job, all right? And that's discriminatory. So that's just one example of what I'm talking about, where, you know, you're making arguments, and the arguments don't make sense to me. You know, you're sitting up here talking about diversity and things like that, and then you hire a principal for, at Orchard Valley Middle School, who hadn't, who cast herself as an expert on the subject, and based on her, I guess, workshops that she presented, was an absolute disgrace. It was insulting, all right? So why was she put in that position? Because she knew somebody. I tried to find out, well, who did she know? I want to look at her references, which I think legally I'm entitled to. The business administrator huddles with the past, the past attorney, and the past attorney, who's getting money from the same people who are conducting this fraud on us, for, or giving them money for their, their campaigns and them being put on as the, the attorney, decides he can't look at the, the resume, all right? So this is a, a major problem. You have to look at your, the way you do your business, the structure of the school system, before you're going to start correcting some of these problems. Thank you.
Carol Chilla.
I had no intention of coming back up, but I feel compelled that I have to, because everyone, as they walk out the door, we're all looking at no place for hate. And there was a whole lot of hate in this room tonight, and I'm embarrassed that we had a student come up, that we had adults talking over and making comments, and I want to apologize to Emily, the student that came up that was brave enough. I'm really embarrassed that we had adults doing that to a student. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, that's okay, but I got to be honest, just take this down, because, I mean, I may anyway, because we're not really following it, especially with the adults in the room. So everyone has a right to their opinion, that's fine. I try to teach my children the same thing, respect, everyone has their opinion, but when we go into hate the way we did tonight, I have to get up here, and I'm going to encourage every board member here tonight, hit your mic and talk about how appalling it was, that we had a student come up, a student in our presence, a student on the board, and that behavior of the adults, the commentary that I heard was embarrassing, and this is where it starts. And I know that we can do better, and we have this side, and we have this side, and I don't think we're ever going to go here in the middle, because I just don't think there's a middle ground for some things, and we're talking about test scores, we're talking about all these things, and I got to be honest with you, if we continue to promote hate and pretend like we don't, we're never going to learn anything in the district anyway. We're not. We're all here for no reason. I'm coming up to the podium, I'm talking about be in person, be in person. Yeah, I might switch, I might change my mind. I don't know if we're all ready to be in a room together, because what I saw tonight was so embarrassing. I, I'm rarely speechless, but I really have to apologize for any student that's here, any student that was listening, any teacher that preaches, no hate, the board is supposed to be doing the same thing. I don't know, this is probably not a time, and I know, the attorney, what's your, Ari? You're probably going to get mad at me, because I'm going to want an answer, and I'm going to shout it anyway. You all should be commenting on what happened tonight. We have a student in the room that was deeply affected by the words of adults. Regardless of what your beliefs are, we should not be rude and disrespectful while a student is at this podium. We had one here earlier tonight who was amazing, well-spoken, we all clapped. I didn't see everyone clap for the other student that got up and was brave enough to speak like the prior student. This has nothing to do with what you believe or feel. This is just right and wrong, hate and kindness. That's just the truth. So I hope that there's a lot of people I haven't heard from tonight on the board. I hope you hit your mic and speak to the students that are here, to let them know that it's not okay to do what happened tonight. And this is not political. I'm the least political person, which is truth. This is right and wrong, regardless of how you want to identify someone or not, I don't really care, because that's not really for us to decide. But I'm going to tell you, I encourage you, please, hit your mic and at least make an apology to the student that's here, because it was wrong what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Emily. You and I have spoken before, and I've told you how proud I am of you coming up and speaking to the mic. I'm not used to being in this spot as, you know, acting president, so I apologize, but I am very proud of you. If you know any of the students that I have taught, I have always led with kindness. My kids always knew that they were like my kids every day, it didn't matter who they were, it was what was inside, and that's what I'm telling you. It's what you are inside, not here, okay?
As your superintendent, not having heard anything, but now being aware that something did, not that I run the meetings, but on behalf of the district, our full administrative team, our staff, all of us that work in District K-12, I apologize to you that you had to endure that, and please accept that sincerely, on behalf of all of us that represent those of us that work in the district, okay? Thank you.
Just, yeah, you did a great job both times you've come to speak. I just want you to know, we can't hear what's happening back in the seats there. We only can hear what's happening at the, the mic here.
Did you hear it?
I heard it.
Yeah, we couldn't hear it here.
Emily, thank you. We, back here, didn't hear, in fact, Tasha and I were just saying how we feel out of the loop, because we don't hear a lot that goes on over there, so you did a remarkable job tonight, so I applaud you.
I also just wanted to, like, speak on that. I don't understand how you can get so upset about a flag. Me personally, I'm not a part of the LGBT community, but I don't feel like I support whatever you believe, and it doesn't affect me having a flag up. If that helps you feel represented, then I support that. But I, the only thing I would say is, I did have a teacher who, he was very religious and Chris, he was Christian, and he was discriminated against for, like, it's been, like, a growing thing where they're promoting it more, where it's, they're discriminating against Christian people too. And he ended up losing his job, because, and even if I was a part of that community, I don't, he wouldn't treat me any differently, and it shouldn't present itself as far as, like, the material is concerned. Like, if he teaches his job and does it well, I think that's what's important. But I feel like everyone should be represented, so, so.
Thank you. Just, just for an aside, next time, we didn't get your name, and next time you need to hand a card, and, and thank you for getting up to speak, though. Yeah, and we need your name.
Here, honey.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Chelsea.
Chelsea, and your last name, Chelsea?
Chelsea.
Oh, Kelsey, I'm sorry. Kelsey Alexander, thank you. All right, do you have any more? I'd like to make a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.